I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. We could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. Thank you, Griffin. Is there support?
Support.
Thanks, Amy. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
We'll move on to the consent. Is there any board member who would like to be removed and acted on separately? Seeing none, can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
Madam President.
Griffin.
I move that the Board of Education approve the consent as presented.
Thank you for your support.
Support.
Thanks, Amy. Any discussion?
He was trying to hold the power.
Yeah, I guess.
All right, thank you. Okay, here are no terms. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we've reached our presentation, and it looks like we have a high school art student presentation.
Good evening. My name is Brent Dowge. This is Lindsay Mylik Dowge, my wife, Jeremy Snyder, and Stephen Gill. We teach at the high school, art teachers. The first group of students we're going to be recognizing were selected to be in the juryed high school exhibition at Owens Community College called Passages. 100 pieces were selected, and we had 16 of those spots. I guess we'll just do these then. What's that? All right, so our first recipient is Quinn McLeod.
Thank you.
Just stay here for a second.
All right.
Next is Gage Blassingham. Do I have to? I don't know if I have to. That's gauges there. These are gauges here that are up there, right there. Next is Emily Reeves. Emily is not here tonight. Gabe Armstrong. Victoria Gray. Peyton Prelip. Riley Suchek. Skylar Wies. Skylar actually got two awards. There's another one here. I'll hold it a minute. Oh, one for the show. Victoria Deck. Phoebe Shepler. Olivia Chapannick. Sue Mori. Lillian Wisler. Morgan Stockard. Isabella Hughes. Oh, this is the other one? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so the second group, that's the first group. The second group that we're going to be recognizing tonight were selected in a high school exhibition at Eastern Michigan University, and we had four, wait, how many? Eight. How many did? How many? Eight. Sorry, eight students that we are going to recognize. Sorry. So the first one is Isabella Hughes. Skylar Wies. Quinn McLeod. Mackenzie Kester.
Thank you.
Good job. Haley Wernit. Gabby Gutridge. Aubree Michakowski. Phoebe Shepler. That's all.
All right. Yeah, so all the students work so hard, and we're so proud of them, and this work is just a sampling of what they do with us every single day that we always get to enjoy, and so we're so happy to celebrate them at local shows and at community colleges at Eastern. And so we also have the Focus Show coming up, and we know that these students will also be entering those, so hopefully we'll have more good things to share in the future. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do you want us to hold this?
Sure.
Hit one with the staff, too.
Oh, sorry.
It's my second job.
All right, awesome. Thank you so much. I appreciate all the students and families being here. If you are a student and a family that just was recognized, feel free, you can leave. We won't be offended, but we'd love you to stay, but if you want to go, it's okay. We'll move on to our next item, and that's public commentary. Are there any items for public commentary? Agenda items only? Okay, I see no one approaching the mic. We'll go ahead and move on to our board correspondence. Griffin?
The only thing I believe we have was an email from one of the food service providers about the RFP that's coming out for that.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to our Board of Education reports and liaison to the Bedford Township Government, Amy Bissell.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Bedford Township Park Board, Griffin?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Michigan Association of School Boards, Megan?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Policy Committee, again, I think we have a release that Carl will be pulling us together. We have added two additional board members to the Policy Committee, and that'll be our first meeting together as a new committee. Amy Drehorst is excused for the Monroe County Association of Board of Education. I'm not sure, Mr. Chapman, if you have anything, do you have any?
Nothing to report.
All right, thank you. And then it looks like we have Sophia Johnson for a student.
Hello. For Valentine's Day, the Student Council philanthropy group delivered 50 cards to Hickory Ridge on Wednesday, February 12th. Monday, the 10th, we will start a hygiene drive for the Salvation Army in Monroe, which will be a two-week drive. On the 21st, we are having our spring fling, and we are also preparing for a blood drive on April 3rd.
Awesome. Thank you, Sophia. Appreciate it. All right, we'll move on to our items from the superintendent, and it looks like we have the, just maybe two items, three items, two items.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Pincheting for Dr. Schultz tonight. The first item that we have is consideration to improve students' international travel, and we have a couple visitors tonight. We have Mr. Stephen Gill, an art teacher, in a fantastic Starry Night shirt, and Mr. Weber, our high school principal, to give us a summary of a new program.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman, and thank you, Board of Education, for allowing us to be here today and considering this trip. So you got a chance earlier to hear from some of our art department, and they're, like, one of the things that they're doing with students and showcasing their work, a goal of mine, and a goal of Dr. Schultz, is always to make Bedford High School just a place that has a lot of opportunities for students. We've celebrated CTE classes and things like that. We've talked about different clubs and esports and art students and all those great things. But one thing we actually don't currently do, we haven't done in a long time, is international travel. And so, as you know, there are people who love traveling, and we are very fortunate when we hired Mr. Gill. Not only is he a great art teacher, and he embodies that, like Mr. Chapman said, for you every day, but letting him share that passion with art, you see the work of that. One of our goals is to let him share, he is a passionate for travel. He has been to a slew of countries. He travels all the time. It's a passion of his, and he wants to connect students to that same opportunity. And so he's right for one. I've had lots of teachers over years kind of bring up the idea of international travel, but it's a lot of legwork, a lot of questions, when I get my principal hat on and start asking some details in how we're going to handle this and how we're going to handle that. It's a lot to take on. And so, but Mr. Gill never shied away, continued to work. You'll see he's partnered with a company called EF Tours. It's a professional organization that has a good reputation of making sure that trips are always well-organized, safety, you have a tour guide, and that all the essentials, including insurance and policies like that, are all embedded in that. And so he's been working with them, and so we're excited to be able to offer this to our students. Don't really know how much interest will be there as you go through the process, but again, we would like the opportunity to be able to offer it to kids and then maybe set flight across the ocean. For more details, I'll turn over to Mr. Gill.
Thank you for having me. Sorry, I'm losing my voice a little bit, so please bear with me. I also have my phone out, too, if we have any questions that can't be answered. I have the EF representative, Lindsay Tavirazzi, ready on speed dial. She, they're based out of Cambridge, Massachusetts, so she couldn't make it tonight. So I just had a little summary of, we're here to propose an EF tour to Lisbon, Portugal, and Sevilla in Madrid, Spain, for the beginning of summer 2026. Since mid-November, we have been talking about having EF trips brought back to Bedford students to extend their possibilities for an immersive high school opportunity. From my own travels around the world, I have witnessed firsthand how influential an experience like this can possibly impact someone. With the success of this trip, I'm hoping to continue the EF program in future years, but for right now, I'm hoping to get the support from the Board and the community to make this first trip a reality.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. We're going to go ahead and get a motion so that we can have some discussion. Can I get a motion for the consideration to approve the students' international travel?
Madam President.
Megan?
I move that the Board of Education approve the students' international travel as recommended.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Thanks, Cole. Okay, discussion, questions? So I did not get a chance to read this if we did have this in email, so I just, a couple of questions. The, I saw it's one to six students, one to six chaperone. That's probably standard.
Yes.
Are the chaper, I'm assuming the chaperones get vetted. It'll probably end up being staff, you know, could be some parents.
Correct. So I reached out to, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I reached out to, first, the Spanish Department, the World History Department. We have a teacher, Katie Thompson, who does the art history course, and then, of course, all of the art teachers as well. So that was kind of the first stepping stone. Anyone can really take this on and can go from any department. We do have a couple requirements with, like, having a couple years of foreign language or art, just so that, you know, they're kind of embracing that while they're over there.
Okay. And are the chaperones' trip paid, or do they pay their own way?
We've kind of discussed through EF. It lists it as they go, like, lumped in, but we've talked about doing fundraising to, you know, help pay for our way.
Okay. And then, from the student side, I don't even, I hate to say this, but I'm going to say it. The policy would be clear that if this, so I'm talking about refunds. So if a student does have some disciplinary issues and they're no longer able to go, do they get their money back? And I would assume we would make sure all the parents know that any disciplinary action would preclude them?
So our trip has to be so far in advance, and it would be made 26th for the students. So they have a pretty good leeway policy where if something were to happen, or, you know, there's another pandemic or something like that, that they have it as close as possible to the date of travel without having to switch too many arrangements.
Then I can tell you that explicitly in the permission slip, there's a series of items that parents have to initial by, and that policy isn't just lumped into a packet of 20 pages, it's explicitly stated in the initial on that piece, so they understand what they're signing up for and when things are due and when there is a no more refund policy.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, because that is so far in advance, anything can happen, I guess, at that point. Okay, awesome. This is great. Anyone else have any other questions or comments? Go ahead, Griffin.
We did this a few years ago. I think you and I are the only ones still around when the last time we did this. I don't remember having any issues on any of the trips.
No. The Costa Rica trip? I think it was.
I think there was a couple, maybe two. I don't remember.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't remember any issues at all. Yeah, I remember with our Washington DC trip, I think we had some issues with some parents not understanding the refund policy associated with disciplinary action and things like that. So just, again, all things said, I'm sure we have all those boxes ready to be checked and go. So I think this is a fantastic opportunity for our students. Thank you for taking it up and bringing it to the Board.
Madam President, I'm looking at the permission slip, and it is clearly laid out for families to, like, 360 days prior to the event and stuff also, so that, and how much of the refund they get. There's a $95. This is very similar to the Washington DC trip, so most eighth-grade parents have already experienced the situation. And it's very clearly laid out how they get their refund and everything. So great job on the permission slip as well.
Thank you.
All right, awesome. Thank you. Oh, go ahead, Mike.
I just have to say that I did an EF tour back in the eighth grade, back in the 1900s. So they must have been around a long time, and I had a fantastic time. So I'm very excited to see something like this coming back to Bedford.
I did want to add, too, the company's been around for 55 years. I personally, as an educator, have taken five EF tours. Education First is the acronym, or at least it was. I don't know if they still hold on to that, but I've been to Germany, Greece, Costa Rica, Chicago, and Toronto. So all over the place with EF, and they've always been really well-organized, affordable. I mean, it's not free. It's an expensive trip to go abroad, but I feel like they do their best to make it affordable, as affordable as possible for families.
Go ahead.
If, I know it says 24 to 30, is that our limit? What if you ended up having, say, 35 students that are interested and able to go?
That'd be great. So they also do allow for an extra charge, like, the parent or guardian can go. They're a little bit more expensive with it if, like, they want to make it a family event. I actually went to a mixer in Northwest Ohio, and a lot of people were telling me about how it was, of course, the students, but some, it was kind of extended into the community, too. Considering I haven't done this for, like, at Bedford before, that was kind of the estimate of 24 to 30, but, I mean, it'd be great if we could get as many students involved, and hopefully, looking forward to another trip beyond that.
Miss attorney went on a Costa Rica trip, and she's agreed to, if we get to a second chaperone, then we'll have a female go. It's always good to have a male and female, and so she's already agreed to go. And she had done a Costa Rica trip before with them, so.
She's taking one for the team. I'll also take one for the team. All right. Any other comments? Okay. Thank you. Seeing none, this is a roll-call vote. Amy Bissell?
Yes.
Amy Drehorst is excused. Cole?
Aye.
Todd?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, and the motion carries. Thank you. Appreciate the presentation.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. All right, we'll move on to our instructional items, and Alex, I think you've pretty much everything.
Yeah, pincheting for Dr. French on this one. We have consideration to opt out of the Michigan Department of Education Schools of Choice Program, five, or 105 and 105C, and to opt into the Monroe County School of Choice Program. So essentially, what we do is we opt out, in Monroe County, our nine districts have collaborated, and we do this annually. So you'll see the 105 and the 105C is an annual process for Board action. In the School of Choice piece is that we have an agreement that we will trade essentially in the School of Choice process up to 1% of our population. So for example, in Bedford, we have approximately 3,900 students, so we will give up to 39 students to other districts and take up to 39 students from other districts, so that one district isn't excessively drawing students from another district, which, in a county such as ours with nine school districts, essentially two large school districts and seven small school districts, that could really be devastating to one of the smaller districts if they were to lose a substantial population to Bedford or Monroe, for example. So this is an agreement that's been in place for quite a while, and essentially, it's a renewal that happens annually.
All right. Thank you so much. Can I get a motion for the consideration to opt out of the Michigan Department of Education Schools of Choice Programs?
Madam President?
Cole?
I move that the Board of Education opt out of the Michigan Department of Education Schools of Choice Programs, 105 and 105C, and opt into Monroe County School of Choice Program as recommended.
Thanks, Cole. Is there support?
Support.
Todd? Any discussion on this one? Okay, seeing none, this is a roll-call vote. Amy Bissell?
Yes.
Thank you. Amy Drehorst is excused. Cole?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, and the motion carries. Thank you. And our personnel items.
Okay, this one is mine. Consideration to accept BEA retirements. We had a, I believe it was mid-February, around February 15th deadline, for BEA members to announce their retirement to receive a financial incentive and to take advantage of that. So we have two considerations to, for BEA retirement this evening. Fourth-grade instructor at Douglas Road Elementary, Nicole Height, and seventh and eighth-grade math instructor at the junior high school, Cory Bergermeister. Nicole has been with us since 1995. She is a fourth-generation Bedford student and educator. She's a full-circle class of 1987, and her, she, her roots run deep with Bedford schools. I know it was a difficult decision for her to make to retire, and Cory's been with us, Cory Bergermeister's been with us since 1999, so he's a long time. Math teacher, and he's a basketball coach as well, so two well-tenured teachers. Big losses for the district, and we wish them the best.
All right, thank you. Can I get a motion for the consideration to accept the BEA retirements?
Madam President?
Amy?
I move that the Board of Education accept the BEA retirements, A through B, as listed below, as recommended. The fourth-grade instructor at Douglas Road Elementary, Nicole Height, and the seventh/ eighth-grade math instructor at the junior high school, Cory Bergermeister.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
I think I heard Todd. Thank you. Any discussion?
Cory is a great math teacher and really turned math around for my daughter, and it's, we really are losing a great math teacher here. Big shoes to fill. Good luck, Alex.
Yeah, I would, and it looks like they're both finishing the school year, right? And we'll just look forward to hiring in their place?
Yes.
All right. Yeah, I would agree. Yeah, I've been around long enough to know both of them a little well as well, and I think they're both fantastic, so, but well-deserved. Put in their time.
Bittersweet.
Yeah, bittersweet. That's a good way of putting it. All right, seeing no other discussion, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion carries. Thank you. We've reached our second public commentary. Any public commentary at this time? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to our announcements, and I think we have Ms. Mackey in the audience.
Good evening. Nice to see you all. I'm Nikki Mackey, the Assistant Principal at Monroe Road Elementary, and happy to share with you about our amazing Bedford Public Schools. So I'm going to start with the high school and work my way down. The high school has reported, and National Honor Society applications have been submitted, and soon the committee will begin selecting their newest National Honor Society members. Many of their organizations, such as robotics, mock trial, Quiz Bowl, BPS, powerlifting, and our music departments, to name a few, are competing in regional and state competitions, and they're very proud of the things that their student leaders are accomplishing this winter. On the athletic side, their winter sports are wrapping up a terrific winter season. Competitive cheer, girls' basketball, and wrestling, all were SEC champions. Our boys' basketball team just won districts for the first time since 2013, and wrestling had a strong showing in the state finals, and several individuals went to individual states. Go Mules! Win Time, otherwise known as What I Need, time started this week. Thirty-minute scheduled period has allowed staff to work with students that need more support, but also allows for offering of extension activities, from extra reading time to extra music, as well as SAT prep and focus time to work on scholarships, and they're excited to continue that work. For the junior high, Win Time also started this week for them. Students will have 30 minutes scheduled in their day for intervention and enrichment, and the JAHs math counts team took first place at regionals and will be going to the state competition in a couple of weeks. Nicholas Mitchell, sixth grade, earned top math student out of a field of sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. So go Nick! Eighth-grade Quiz Bowl team also took first place in their competition yesterday, so that was awesome. For Jackman Road, they had a visitor. March 6th, the author Denise Brenneman visited JRE. The 10th through the 14th, their fifth graders had the Camp Michindo. March 17th, St. Patrick's Day, they're dressing in green. March 18th, JREPTO, Fifth Grade Recognition Planning Meeting. JREPTO meeting at 6:30 on the 18th. 19th, Young Five Imagination Station, and March 21st, End of Third Quarter Bounce House Event. SOS, or Students for Other Students, is a success at JRE. JRE is fortunate to have the SOS program. This is a peer tutoring program in which the BHS students come to work with their mini mules. This program was founded in 1989, and SOS provides schools the financial support to establish this peer-to-peer tutoring. Mrs. Anita Brandman, JRE reading specialist, coordinates the program, and the program will conclude on March 7th. Their third graders at JRE had a lot of students participate in Hats Off to Helping Animals Day on Friday, February 14th. The students were able to wear a hat in support of helping animals in need. In addition, third-grade students made toys and treats for the animals at the shelter. JRE raised $940 for the Monroe County Humane Society. Miss Norton's class raised $134 and won the Stray Hearts Trophy and an extra recess. It was a close competition with Mrs. Small's class raising $123.70, and Mrs. Curick's class raising $122. We appreciate everyone who supported this event. The Monroe County Humane Society picked up the supplies and brought some furry visitors with them. It's also Read Across America Week this week, March 3rd through the 7th. The theme this year is Reading Makes You Aware of Your Emotions, and we'll have a spirit this week at JRE. this week at JRE, uh, JRE mini mules love reading. JRE Student Council, the JRE Student Council has been meeting regularly, they wanna thank them for organizing the disaster relief fundraisers, JRE raised six hundred and fifty dollars, Ms. Walling's class raised the most, they got to pick the principal's theme for the day, Cocohmelon was selected, and each class got to dress as their own theme on Wednesday, February twenty-sixth. At Douglas Road, fifth grade students are looking forward to the spelling bee competition with the winner moving on to the county spelling bee at the Monroe County ISD, as well as the runner-up. Camp Michindo meetings and parent chaperones are getting trained for outdoor education experience coming up in April, PTO Book Fair is next week with Family Reading Night, and Speaker Denise Brennan Nelson, Michigan author, on Thursday, March sixth, and first grade students will be performing dances around the world on March twentieth at seven PM. And then for Monroe Road, um, Monroe Road just finished last night, we had a successful, um, Reaching Higher Leadership Program graduation, it was awesome, um, that's such a great program, it's, it's, I got to lead it this year, I was trained in reaching higher and got to, to lead that whole process, and, um, parents are always so moved after the graduation ceremony to see what those kids, the growth that they make in their leadership, um, skills. Um, we also had, uh, author visit of Denise Brennan Nelson this week on the fourth, we're also, um, participating in Spirit Week at Monroe Road with an array of colors for each day of the week, um, we're getting close to the end of our spring tutoring session, which ends March twentieth, we're grateful for the opportunity to provide students with some extra targeted interventions, and our student council had a, held a pajama day for a one-dollar fundraiser and gifted the Bed, Bedford Senior Center with a giant Valentine's basket, um, filled with an array of gift cards and Valentine's fun and all that good stuff, so that was, that was fun. Um, we also, uh, just wrapped up our first semester PBIS Assembly, which was Masked Singer at Monroe Road Elementary, and, um, that was, that was a major hit, the kids had a blast, um, lots of fun to celebrate the PBIS. Upcoming spelling bee for our fifth graders as well will be held on March nineteenth, we too are preparing for the fifth grade students to head to Camp Michindo in April, um, and then our fifth graders head to Kennebush tomorrow for a field trip. Lots of good stuff going on in Bedford. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you Nikki, appreciate you being here. All right, we'll go ahead and move on to, uh, Jason, and I think he'll come out from behind the wall.
Yes, I can make it, uh, I can make it real quick, um, we have had tremendous success with the Full Circle, I just got two more today, um, and, uh, so that seems to be an ongoing thing, which is a great thing, um, had our second meeting with the, um, final site people, uh, Trish Chantel and myself are working on the website, um, that redesign is going to blow people away, um, it is, you know, months away, but we are working on a framework right now, um, so that, uh, things are in one place instead of three and four, um, and, just, uh, to let you guys know, analytics-wise, we're averaging about one point one million views, um, a month, um, on our, our page, so I'm really happy with the engagement that we've had, and, um, we have a lot of new things coming out for K-Day, we're gonna switch K-Day up and make that a, a, a bigger event for the district, um, which will include signage, uh, at all the kindergartners' houses, so that we can, uh, extend our pride out to the newest, uh, mini mules, so, got quite a few things, you guys have gotten a sticker today that was, uh, part of our new, uh, thing we're gonna get, we have new t-shirts, and, um, in production right now is a ten-foot version of that, um, and inflatable, so, um, that will be used at all of our elementaries, um, they all chipped in, and, uh, we use it for K-Day and then for special events, so, uh, upping our profile there as well, so, that's about all I have.
Awesome, thanks Jason, appreciate it. All right, we'll move on to our administrators at the table, and Chrissy?
Good evening, uh, we are finishing a work on mid-year budget adjustments, and we'll have that to present at the April meeting, and we continue to work on the food service RFP, and we'll have that ready for release in the coming weeks.
All right, thank you. We'll move on this way, Tom?
Yes, um, as you're aware, there's currently four RFPs out on the street right now, uh, one for transportation repavement, uh, one for Douglas Road Cafeteria Flooring, one for Monroe Road Cafeteria Flooring, and one for Monroe Road Painting of the Cafeteria and the Gym. Um, we've had a lot of interest, um, you can go on the website under Facilities Department and take a look at the current plan holders, who, who, who printed their RFPs and who, who's as interested in the projects, and, uh, any questions and answers that I provided for those. Um, I'm hoping to get a lot of bids, those are due next Tuesday, we will open those starting at two o'clock, every half hour, we'll do a, another, another bid package. Um, the signage, the, the new signs that'll be hanging in the buildings, um, high school is, been, uh, all the schools have been submitted, all the new, new room numbers have been, been, been completed, um, waiting back from, uh, the, the company to send back, um, quantity takeoffs so they can be approved, and then from there, so those are all on schedule to be installed, uh, this summer. That's all I have.
Awesome, thanks Tom, and Alex? Time's three.
Yeah, it, it's, it's been a really busy time, um, it's a great time of season as things start to wrap up with athletics, we, I'm sure in the next month, we'll have an opportunity to recognize all the achievements that our athletic teams have, have had over the, uh, over the season, but, um, tomorrow night, our girls are facing off against our rival Monroe at seven PM at Woodhaven, hopefully we'll get a, a big turnout for that event and, and be able to, to win that, uh, that game tomorrow night in advance. Our boys' team lost a heartbreaker on Tuesday night, I was able to attend in Dearborn, uh, they just lost by a few points to Lincoln Park, they had a fantastic season, our wrestling team, as was mentioned, so it's been a great time of year, and then our band, um, had a great day today too, um, pulling all ones, um, both bands, the varsity band and the symphonic band, and they're competing throughout, uh, they, they advanced to states and they're gonna be competing for the next few weeks, so, so a lot happening in Bedford, all good things, and then on the, uh, human resources side, we have staff development, um, our professional day of development through, uh, through Dr. French's department with our teachers occurs next Friday, March fourteenth, and we have the trade fair coming up the following day on the fifteenth, and then, we're already thinking staffing, we're meeting with principals and kind of looking at our building staffing for next year and already preparing for September, so, a lot happening, it's a great time of year.
All right, thank you so much, and we'll start with our board members, Cole?
I just wanted to say thank you to our district and to our board for allowing me to go to the CBA one oh one class, that was super informative, and that was very, very cool to sit there and get to see all the different districts and see the different interactions that people had and how their boards are kind of handling situations, so it was super, super impactful, so thank you for that. I also wanted to just say congratulations to, uh, Mrs. Height and Mr. Bergermeister on their retirement, thank you.
Thanks Cole, Megan?
Um, thank you, it's an exciting time of year, but, um, it's a very exciting time of year for me because lacrosse season starts on Monday, um, and that's all I got, I'm gonna be really busy for the next three months.
Awesome, thanks Megan, Amy?
I just wanna congratulate our teachers on their retirements as well, um, I do wanna do a quick shout-out, uh, to the high school staff, um, there's more than just the classes, our high school also provides amazing clubs for our students, and, um, they did a mock trial this week, which was pretty cool, uh, Jason's gonna have pictures here shortly for the Facebook, and then, um, I know next month, the Young Conservatives Club, who are interested in politics, will be going to Lansing and meeting with our state reps and getting to watch them actually debate things on the floor, so they're pretty excited. Oh, and a special shout-out to Jackie Lancina, she came out of her own pocket to cover the subs for the teachers that will be going with their students that day. Amazing, she goes above and beyond.
Awesome, thanks Amy, Griffin?
I'd like to congratulate the eighth grade quiz bowl team, my oldest is on the team, this is his third year doing that, he really enjoys it, they are really, it's a lot of fun to watch, um, it's, it's, some of the questions here, like, you know, like, you know the answer, but obviously, can't, uh, give any clues out for the audience, but, it's a lot of fun to watch, the seventh grade was today, they beat, they ended up going down in the third round to a very talented either team, but they beat, uh, Airport and Mason, um, in their competition, so, correct, congrats to both of those teams. Um, Camp Michindo, I know I've got a fourth or a fifth grader going to that next week, looks like they're gonna have some awesome weather for that, it's supposed to be like in the sixties, um, so, my, my other kids are like, they care less about camp, this one, he's had his bag packed, like, for days, like, he's, cannot wait, kept reminding me about, gotta pay dad, deadline coming up, he's excited for it, so, um. I'd also like to thank Tom for all the RFP work, let me tell you, at the bus garage, they have that map on the bulletin board, they're super excited about having that paved, we've had some injuries there in recent years from falls, um, I know at least one of them got us some OSHA attention as well, so hopefully we can not have that happen anymore with the new paving. I've been reaching out to people I know who are in those various industries, encouraging them to bid, the more bids, obviously, the better, we can get the best price for the best work, so looking forward to that, thank you.
Thanks Griffin, Todd?
I just wanna congratulate the sports teams and, obviously, the debate team, and, um, it's great for me to be a part of the retirements, um, watch the, watch them get full circle, we've been doing the full circle thing, and retirement's the, the next step for all of us, thanks.
Appreciate it, thanks Tom. Um, I, I, I just wanted to thank Alex for, uh, pitch hunting tonight for, um, you know, uh, for Carl who's not here, um, Carl is at the AAS A National Superintendent Conference, um, or, or the way we put it is learning how to be a better superintendent, so, we'll hope that sticks. Um, and then, uh, Dr. French is actually at the conference on elem, our elementary math program, so, both of those, uh, both of those conferences are, um, fully funded through grants, um, and then the math company, so, um, that's some great learnings for our leadership, uh, in both of those areas, so, thank you so much, appreciate it, Alex, always welcome to have you, um, sitting here next to me. Um, I wasn't here last, um, um, in January, so, I will commit to, again, telling you every single time I talk, is that, if you are a senior or a parent of a senior, please remember to check the scholarship page, um, because there are thousands, tens of thousands of dollars sitting out there waiting to be claimed, and, um, apply for as many as you possibly can, so, uh, we're just a reminder there, and I wanted to, uh, thank the, the staff and the art students who showed up, uh, tonight, I'm so impressed by, by art students, right, my brain, I don't have that part of my brain, although I love to take pictures, to use your hands and your eyes and your, you know, any materials to just kind of create some of those, um, art pieces that those students, I'm just in awe every single time when we get to an opportunity to see them, um, because it's just so impressive and the, and the talent in this district in art, in music, in sports, right, it's endless, but I love seeing the art students, uh, come, so thank you very much for that. And with that being said, if there's no other comments, we will go ahead and I'll ask for someone, uh, motion for adjournment. Amy, thanks Amy, is there support?
Support.
Thanks Megan, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion carries, thank you. Have a good.